They warned me, girl, don't play with fire. But I crave the burn. I climb it higher. Your lips were sparks. Your hands were sin. I knew the heat. And still gave in. I lick the flame. I taste the pain. It curls my soul. It floods my veins. You light the match. I feed the game. I never run. I lick the flame. Your love's a torch that scars my skin. But baby, pain's where I begin. You think I'm lost. I made this hell. I own the burn. I wear it well. I lick the flame. I kiss the smoke. I wear the heat like crimson clothes. You call it hurt. I call it fame. 'Cause I don't cry. I lick the flame. Some girls want safe. I want wildfire. I lick the flame. No shame, no fear. I want it close. I draw it near. So burn me slow. Forget my name. But never doubt. I lick the flame. Let the good girls run. I'll dance with the fire.
You thought I'd break. You thought I'd bleed. But honey, hate grows like a weed. You fed me lies with silver hands. Now I write justice in the sand. Ain't no mercy, no mercy in me. Cold as whiskey, wild as the sea. You want forgiveness? It ain't free. 'Cause there's no mercy, no mercy in me. I burned my past in black high heels. I carved your name on spinning wheels. You knelt too late. The door's been closed. I buried soft where thorn rose grows. No mercy, baby. Don't ask why. I kissed you once. Now kiss goodbye. I learned to bite before I plead. And now there's no mercy in me. You had my heart once. Now you got my silence. No mercy, no tears, no plea. I walk away. You'll never see that girl who begged. She's history. No mercy left in me. You prayed for angels. But I came back a god.
You met me in the midnight fire. Said you weren't afraid of desire. Now every breath you take alone. Got my shadow carved in your bone. Preach my name, boy. Say it loud like a sermon breaking through the crowd. I ain't your saint. I ain't your shame. But you'll kneel when you preach my name. You thought I was yours to save. But I'm a ghost you'll always crave. Tried to change me in your prayer. Now I haunt your every air. Preach my name, boy. Say it right like a hymn in the heat of night. No forgiveness, no refrain. Just my echo in your veins. Testify, baby. Testify. You lost heaven when you told that lie. Preach my name in sin and smoke. Every vow you ever broke. I ain't no bride. I ain't no flame. But your soul still preach my name. Preach it, sinner. Preach it, true. Preach it, sinner. You left your rules at my front door. Guess what, baby? I don't need them no more. I pour the wine. Light my own flame. This queen don't beg to play your game. Heels on the table. Lips full of red. I raise my glass to the life I live. I don't ask twice. I don't act sweet. Heels on the table. Boots off your feet. I don't do waiting. I don't do tears. I've danced through hell in these high-heeled years. So sit down, boy, and learn my name. I ain't your doll. I'm not your shame. Heels on the table. Rules on the floor. My love's a storm you can't ignore. I don't chase dreams. I make them plead. Heels on the table and I take the lead. You wanted a lady. But I'm the whole damn thunderstorm. Heels on the table. Smoke in the air. I'll take your truth and strip it bare. No second chance. No slowing speed. Heels on the table and I lead the need. Now clean the mess. I just made history. Heels click like secrets down the lane. Smoke curls up like a lover's name. Eyes of honey, lips of sin. She pulls you close, then pulls the pin. She's the siren on Bourbon Street. Where every heartbeat skips a beat. She'll smile, then steal your sleep. She's the fire that never weeps. She walks where saints forget to pray. Where jazz and devils tend to play. Her perfume's laced with old regret. And every kiss a fatal bet. Yeah, that siren on Bourbon Street knows just when to taste defeat. But she'll own you with just one glance. Then vanish in her deadly dance. They say she once loved a man. Now she only loves the game. Oh, that siren on Bourbon Street sings low, sings dark, sings sweet. You'll beg, you'll cry. You'll freeze in heat. She's the queen you'll never meet. If you hear her humming, it's already too late. You heard my heels on hardwood floors. Like thunder knocking at your door. You lit your prayers, but it's too late. I'm the fire you can't sedate. Tremble when I call, baby. I don't beg, I break and burn. You were king till I walked in. Now it's my throne. It's my turn. My lipstick's loud, my walk is war. You kissed the devil you adored. You swore you'd change. You swore you'd wait. But baby, I just dominate. Tremble when I call, sugar. I don't plead, I rule the game. Your heart's a toy. Your pride's the price. I leave, but never leave the same. I'm the lesson you'll never unlearn. Tremble when I call, honey. Don't pretend you wanna beg. You fill me deep like southern heat. And I don't ever fade away. I don't haunt, I conquer. Your touch was wine. Your smile was gold. But love don't age like stories told. You held me close, but not too tight. Now I'm just shadows in your light. Bitter kiss, sweet goodbye. Tears don't fall, they softly lie. I loved you deep, but not enough to stay in chains and call it love. Your words were silk, laced up in lies. I danced alone behind your eyes. The perfume fades, the fire dies. But I still crave your alibis. Bitter kiss, sweet goodbye. I leave in heels, not asking why. You lost a heart too good to keep. Now your regret won't let you sleep. Not all goodbye is pain. Sometimes it's power. Bitter kiss, sweet goodbye. A love like ours was born to die. I'll keep the blooms. You keep the lies. Now watch me bloom as you run dry. One kiss, one sigh, then I fly. I paint my rage in crimson shine. Each stroke a line you crossed in time. These nails don't scratch, they carve it in. A warning wrapped in velvet sin. Nails in red, baby, mark my name. I came to win, not play your game. Your pretty lies can't stay in bed. I leave a trail, nails in red. I've burned my tears, I've kissed the blade. Now I wear heat like sweet parade. You beg for love, but play me cold. Now feel my fire unfold. Nails in red, honey, scratch the sky. I don't forget, I don't comply. You touched a queen, I'll bow instead. I walk away, nails in red. I'm not the girl you left behind. I'm the storm you taught to smile. Nails in red, like blood and wine. Every goodbye, a power sign. A kiss I burn, I raise the dead. Don't mess with girls in nails so red. You wanted souls. You got fire. You got fire. Boy, you lit a fire you can't tame. Whispered my name like it was shame. Thought you could ride this hurricane. But baby, the storm don't play no game. There's smoke between my thighs. You come close, you pay the price. I ain't no doll, I ain't no prize, just heat and hunger in disguise. You tasted lips, thought you knew me. But I'm whiskey laced with gasoline. I burn slow, I burn wild. Leave your heartbeat crucified. Yeah, smoke between my thighs. Wrapped in silk and sharp goodbyes. You crave it once, then realize there's no return from these wild highs. Darling, I don't love. I consume. Smoke between my thighs. No truth, no tender lie. Just fire, dressed up nice in the burn of paradise. You started this flame, now live in the ashes.
He said love should feel like heaven. But baby, this feels more like sin. Wrapped me up in whispered fever. Now I can't find where I begin. Velvet chains, soft and cruel. He plays my heart like a worn-out jewel. I try to leave, but I come undone, 'cause her never felt this fun. His kiss is a silk noose tight. Pulling slow underneath on light. I wear his lies like perfume deep. Dream of him even when I sleep. Velvet chains wrapped so tight, sweet as cage in the dead of night. I bleed in blue, I'm on in flame, but still I whisper his name.
Don't ask me why I stay. Ask why I let a man.
There'll be chains, I tie them too. I crave the pain dressed up in you. And though it hurts, I still remain addicted to my velvet chain.
It's not love if it don't leave a mark.